Members, good afternoon. There is a quorum and it is time I call to order the special F C meeting. There will be two, there will be three sessions this afternoon. The meeting will continue until six fifty-five tonight. The purpose of this special meeting is to scrutinize the expenditure estimates of the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six financial fiscal year to ensure that the appropriation requested will not exceed the approved amount. I remind members, all questions must be directly related to the expenditure estimates. Please quote the reply number on the right top, on the top right-hand corner of the written reply for reference. If members are unable to follow up on the, if mem-, if the administration cannot get an answer during today's meeting, members may submit written questions to the administration before seven P M. today. Now, this is the session on labor manpower developments and retirement protection. I will first invite Mister Chris on the Secretary for Labor and Welfare for briefing, and then I will open the floor. Please press the button now. Secretary, please. Let's settle down and hear from the secretary. Chairman, members, in the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six fiscal year, the recurrent government spending on labor and manpower development is three thousand four hundred eighty million dollars, representing an increase of about three hundred fifty million dollars or eleven point one percent over the revised estimates of three thousand one hundred forty million dollars last year, accounting for zero point six percent of the total government expenditure. I will highlight the key areas of our work. First, abolishing the M P F offsetting arrangement. The abolition of the M P F offsetting arrangement will take effect on the first of May this year. On the same day, we will launch a twenty-five-year subsidy scheme. I would like to remind employers again that the abolition has no retrospective effect and the pre-transition portion of severance payments and long service payments for existing employees can still be offset after the first of May. Hence, dismissing employees before the abolition takes effect will not save money. Another key matter is the enhanced supplementary labor scheme. Since the fourth of September twenty twenty-three, we have implemented the enhanced scheme to suspend the general exclusion of the twenty-six job categories as well as unskilled or low-skilled posts from labor importation under the previous supplementary labor scheme for two years. As of March this year, the enhanced scheme received over twelve thousand applications for importing about a hundred and seven thousand workers. During the period, over seven thousand eight hundred applications involving around fifty-four thousand imported workers were approved. We are reviewing the enhanced scheme, including its coverage, operation and implementation arrangements, measures to promote and ensure employment's priority for local workers, measures to protect the rights and benefits of imported workers, and other requirements and matters relating to the enhanced scheme. We will take full accounts of the views of stakeholders, including employers, associations, and labor organizations in mapping out the way forward. Three, strategic minimum wage. The S M W rate will be raised from the prevailing level of forty dollars per hour to forty-two point one dollars on the first of May, providing further protection to low-income employees. Besides, the government is firming up a new annual review mechanism for future S M W rates. The first rates derived under the new mechanism is expected to take effect on the first of May next year. Fourth, amending the Trade Union Ordinance, or T U O. The government also proposes to amend T U O to better safeguard national security and strengthen the regulatory regime for trade unions. The Labor Advisory Board and the Panel on Manpower of the L A G C O supported the amendment proposals. We will introduce the bill into L A G C O by the end of this month. Five, relaxing the continuous contract requirements under the Employment Ordinance, that is, the four-one-eight requirements. There is a consensus reached by the L A B and very quickly, in the middle of this month, we will introduce the bill to the L A G C O to amend the four-one-eight requirement to make it four-six-eight. Six, increasing the ceiling of excise payment on S P under the Protection of Wages on Insolvency Fund of P W I F. On the twenty-first of March this year, we have increased the ceiling of excise payment on S P under P W I F from a million dollars or one hundred thousand dollars plus fifty percent of the excess entitlements to two hundred thousand dollars plus fifty percent of the excess entitlements to strengthen the protection of the rights of employees affected by closures. On youth employment services, we have enhanced the G B A Youth Employment Scheme this month to extend the, to include young people aged twenty-nine or below with sub-degree or higher qualifications and increase the limit of allowance granted to enterprises to twelve thousand dollars per young person per month. The Labor Department also raised the upper age limit for participants of the Youth Employment and Training Program, or Y E T P, to twenty-nine and introduced workplace attachment opportunities in the G B A to enhance their employability. Now, reemployment allowance pilot scheme has been launched for half a year. The response is very favorable. The scheme will last for three years. As of March this year, we have recorded over thirty-eight thousand participants and more than sixteen thousand placements. We believe this scheme can mobilize more older and middle-aged people to join the market. On O S H occupational safety and health, we ha-, we attach high importance to the levels of O S H risk across different industries. And the changes, on top of routine O S H inspections, the Labor Department conducts special enforcement operations, safety audit inspections, and in-depth inspections targeting high-risk processes and construction sites with poor performance. In addition, it has stepped up district patrols targeting minor repair, maintenance, alteration, and addition works to curb unsafe work activities. The department will also enhance the application of technology by introducing small unmanned aircraft in the second half of the year to assist with inspections, evidence collection, and law enforcement. Last year, the Labor Department brought the remaining four elements of the factories and industrial undertaking's safety management regulation into operation and revised the code of practice on safety management to strengthen the safety management system. It has also revised the core practice for bamboo scaffolding safety and for the safety and health of working confined spaces to further strengthen these, the safety in these types of work. And following the revision of the guidance notes on prevention of trapping hazard of tail lifts in March this year, it will revise the code of practice for safe use of tower cranes and the guidance notes on safe use of power-operated elevating work platforms in next, in this year to enhance the safety requirements for operating the relevant machinery. On talent extraction, to meet the manpower shortage or manpower need of industries, besides nurturing local talents, the government has implemented various talent extraction measures, starting from twenty twenty-two. As at end of March this year, we have received over four hundred sixty thousand applications from various schemes with three hundred thousand cases approved where two hundred and three thousand talents have arrived in Hong Kong, some bringing along their family members to settle in Hong Kong. Some hundred and eighty-nine thousand spouses of the approved applicants and their children under the age of eighteen have arrived in Hong Kong. The talents and the families bring about positive impacts on our labor force and add new impetus to our local economy. The first batch of visas under the T T P S have started to expire from the end of December last year. We expect that by the mid of this year, some ten thousand T D T, T D P S visas will expire. As only a small number of applications have been received, we will analyze in detail the relevant statistics when a certain number of applications for extension have been accumulated. The government is reforming various aspects of the talent admission scheme to continue to draw, to travel and retain talents. We have also initiated the arrangements under the Quality Migrant Admission Scheme for proactively inviting top-notch and leading talents to come to Hong Kong. The arrangement has been endorsed by the Committee on Education, Technology, and Talent led by the Chief Secretary of Administration. Under the new mechanism, we will, having regarded various development needs of a country in Hong Kong, proactively persuade the target top-notch talents to settle in Hong Kong. Promoting Hong Kong as the focal point of international high-caliber talents. We will provide throughout process, throughout the process, various personalized facilitations to, to the entities. We appreciate that these top-notch talents are highly sought after worldwide. To avoid affecting the lobbying, we will not disclose the specific operational details about the mechanism. To address the acute manpower shortage locally, we will enhance the general employment policy and the admission scheme for mainland talents and professionals to allow young and experienced non-degree talents with relevant professional and technical qualifications to come to Hong Kong. Meanwhile, the twenty twenty-three policy address announced the two-year Pilot Vocational Professional Admission Scheme, or V P A S. The number of eligible programs in this year, admission cohorts will be increased to thirty-four. While applications will be only opened next year upon the graduation of the first batch of non-local students, we will, we have noticed that since the announcements of V P A S, many non-local students have been attracted to enroll in our programs. The V D C will enhance its promotional efforts and support the non-local graduates in applying under the scheme for staying in Hong Kong for one year to seek jobs. The Hong Kong Talent Engage provides comprehensive one-stop support to incoming talents, covering online and offline workshops in Cantonese, including Cantonese learning courses, seminars, and job fairs centered on living, employment, and entrepreneurship in Hong Kong and social inclusion activities, including the Talent Plus Volunteer Program, to help them settle down in Hong Kong and promote our advantages. In May last year, the H K T E organized the inaugural Global Talent Summit, Hong Kong, and will organize the second G T S early next year to reinforce our status as an international hub for high-caliber talents. The Employees Retraining Board is taking forward its reform and has since early this year implemented short-term measures to enhance its services, including lifting the restriction on educational attainment of trainees. In the medium to long run, the A R B will rename itself and enhance training and employment support services, strengthen research capabilities, and formulate a pertinent training framework. The E R B will submit an implementation plan by the end of this year. The government will continue to work with it to implement the reform to enhance local manpower training, upskilling, and reskilling. To encourage more young people to participate in the apprenticeship scheme and join the relevant trades, starting from twenty twenty-four to five for three years, each registered apprentice will be provided with an additional training allowance of one thousand dollars per month. Graduated apprentices will be subsidized to undertake upskilling courses. Meanwhile, the V D C receives attention to organize short in-service training courses to meet the market's demand. Manpower projection, we have released the report on the twenty twenty-three manpower projection in twenty twenty-four, projecting the manpower shortage by twenty twenty-eight. The manpower shortage will be a hundred eighty thousand workers, with one-third being skilled technical workers. By the end of this year, we will commence the midterm update of the manpower projection with the findings expected to be available in twenty twenty-six. That concludes my remark. I will welcome questions from members. Thank you, Secretary. Twenty-seven members have pressed the button. I will read out the names. For the first eighteen members, I will read out the name and then the second batch, starting from nineteen. The first member is Miss Doreen Kong, then Mister Tang Fei, Professor Chan Wing Kwong, Professor Cha, Cha Man Kong, Mister Kenneth Lau, Kingsley Wong, Miss Lillian Kwok, Mister Johnny Ng, Bill Tang, Stanley Lam Chuen Singh, Benson Look, Miss Carmen Khan, Mister Shanghai Long, Perry Yu, Frankie Yig, Chow Si Chung, and number eighteen, Mister Michael Lee. I think we can entertain the first eighteen members. From the nineteenth members on, it depends on the time. Number nineteen, Mister Mike, uh, Michael Look, Inis Young, Maggie Chan, Doctor So Chan Wing, Michael Tian, Doctor Wendy Hong, Mister Dennis Lung, and Doctor Tan Yueheng. Four minutes, questions and answers included. I will be strict with the time. First, Mister Doreen Kong. Thank you, Chairman. Now, three years on, I got, I, this is the first time I rang first. I'm happy. Now, question number eighteen, my own question in the reply. The administration said more subsidies, what more funding would be offered to the scholarship schemes and research funds and more resources will be spent on trolling for talents. Now, how can we be sure that the resources allocated to industries with manpower shortage? Is there a mechanism to assess the efficacy of these schemes? For example, the actual effects of the matching fund on enhancing our labor structure. Now, we have received a lot of applications on the various talent admission schemes, but there are views that the matching between the talents and the industries should be improved. Now, will the government install real-time data managing platform so that we know how many of these talents go to the industries with manpower shortage? Now, in various industries, there are quarterly vacancy snapshots showing the size of the manpower gap. So maybe we can do a similar thing for our talent scheme to, for more transparency.
Congratulations for being the first member to speak um for the first time in three years. Secretary, please. The first question covers a broad spectrum. We've gathered the views from different bureaus and we try to reply to Miss Kong's questions. I believe the talents who come to Hong Kong, they seek development opportunities here. The I T I B, for example, has launched a number of subsidy schemes and I believe all the incoming talents can benefit from these schemes. I'm not going to provide the details here. The I D I B has provided the details in the paper. I understand that people are concerned how we can make good use of the incoming talents before, uh, apart from leveraging market forces. Recruitment platforms and employment agencies also play an important role. For some talent schemes, they are employment-oriented and the employer can make use of the scheme to find the right candidate. However, some talent admission schemes, they are people-oriented or talent-oriented. The good thing about these schemes is that they can bring about good opportunities. Sometimes employers, they may not know what they need. Under the Top Talent Pass Scheme, for example, category A talents, they do not necessarily take up employment here. They start their own businesses. So I believe we can bring new opportunities to all these incoming talents. Next, Mister Tang Fei. Thank you. I want to follow up on my own questions. The first one, oh seven-two. I want to ask about the employment rate under the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. The government did not respond to my questions and I noticed that in year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, there is a drop in terms of the number of participating enterprises. Also, there is a significant drop in terms of the number of participants. In twenty twenty-three, there is an unemployment rate of twenty-eight percent among the seven hundred and eighty participants. In year twenty twenty-four, four hundred and seventeen people were employed. And about nineteen percent of employment rate was recorded. I want to know if this scheme is still necessary to offer help to young people. That's my first question. Let me look for the question number first. Number one-four-two. It's also about the Top Talent Pass Scheme. According to the government, half of the incoming talents have taken up employment. How about the rest? Also, most of them are in the financial industry as well as the, the telecommunications industry and their salary is higher than the average salary of people in Hong Kong. I think you have to compare their salary with those in the same sector. It's meaningless if you compare the salary of people in the financial industry with those in the construction industry. Understand that as long as you have, for example, a university degree, you can apply for the Top Talent Pass Scheme. I want to know if this scheme has been helping to fill the manpower gap in Hong Kong. Two questions. Secretary, please. Thank you. The first one is about the G B A Youth Employment Scheme. We see that um year twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-three, there is a drop in terms of the number of people employed under the scheme. We see that enterprises are still interested in the scheme and young people in general find this scheme a good one. There are changes to the scheme every year. We have to continue to observe the situation. We've implemented two changes. In the past, we only accepted university students. Now, we accept those with a sub-degree level or above and people below ye-, uh, twenty-nine years old, they can apply for the program now. I think we should give more opportunities to our young people by keeping this scheme. Secondly, on the level of income of incoming talents under the Top Talent Pass Scheme, we did not only carry out questionnaire surveys. After incoming talents who have arrived in Hong Kong for six months, we asked them to fill out a questionnaire survey. So we do not make an apple-to-apple comparison uh in terms of the income level. We made a high-level comparison, but it is clear that these incoming talents are rather young and their income level compared to that of people in Hong Kong, it's relatively high. It's because they are in high-value-added industries like the financial industries or the I N T industry. Mister William Wong. I'd like to follow up on some questions about manpower. Number zero-eight-eight. According to the government, there are a number of talent admission schemes in Hong Kong and they tie in with the policy of the government to travel talents. However, I realize that these schemes are targeting the same groups of talents. For example, those who are eligible for the Top Talent Pass Scheme, they may also come through the tech admission scheme as well as the Quality Migrant Admission Scheme. Can the government review these talent admission schemes to see if there, if there is room for improving the schemes? And also, you should see whether it's possible to reduce the manpower to process the applications so that the government can also travel talents in a more targeted manner. Also, I see that there are uh tens of thousands of applications approved under the Top Talent Pass Scheme, but the relevant positions available are about fifteen. However, under the other ta-, talent admission scheme, that is, the Q M A S, there are a hundred and fourteen posts. How come there is such a huge difference between the establishment for the two schemes? Also, according to media reports, different employment agencies and intermediaries, they help bring in people to Hong Kong to reap profits. What is the establishment under the Top Ta-, Talent Pass Scheme? And is the manpower enough to do the gatekeeping work? Also, since the launch of the Top Talent Pass Scheme, how many surprise inspections have been conducted and what were the results? Lastly, I want to follow up on zero-five-nine on the supplementary labor scheme. As at this February, the government has imported some fifty-one thousand workers. The scheme is positive to Hong Kong. However, some say that some employers, after hiring these workers, they convert these workers into part-time workers as well as uh temporary workers. Is there a cap on the quota for this scheme? And also, how can you strike a balance so that the local employment can be prioritized? In the interest of time, Secretary, you may want to focus on a few questions and please provide the, the supplementary information after the meeting. I'll try my best. There are many talent admission schemes for people to choose from. There might be some that are overlapping each other, but say the Top Talent Pass Scheme, it's clear. I mean, the eligibility. And if you don't like the Talent Pass Scheme, you can apply for the Core, uh, Quality Migrant Admission Scheme and we have a scoring system under this scheme. The Top Talent Pass Scheme is rather straightforward. In contrast, the Q M A S, there is a scoring system, so we need a lot more manpower to process the applications. Some are worried that people may provide fake credentials under the Top Talent Pass Scheme. But starting from last year, we ask for third-party independent credential verifications and proof from applicants. So there's no way that they will provide a false information. How about the supplementary labor scheme? Well, we prioritize local employment, so we will continue to the, play the gatekeeping role. Doctor Cha Man Kong. I want to follow up on zero-four-five from Mister Stanley Lee and zero-four-seven from Mister Louis Long. The re-employment um allowance scheme was one um directed by the Chief Executive. Since last year, we've got some thirty-five thousand participants and forty thousand placements. And the latest figure shows that there's been sixteen thousand placements. And for those aged uh forty to fifty-nine, there are twenty-seven thousand participants and there are over ten thousand placements. And for those aged above sixty, there are eight thousand two hundred success cases. The government has uh reserved hundred and eighty-six million dollars for this re-employment allowance scheme, up seven times compared to last year. I want to know if the government will put in place any measures to encourage the age group of those uh above sixty, to encourage them to join the labor market so that they will rely less on the social welfare benefits. Also, the scheme has exceeded our expectations. I've done some calculations here. According to the reply, for six months, you give them ten thousand dollars. For twelve months, you give them another ten thousand dollars. So the expenditure will be about two hundred and forty million dollars, exceeding the hundred and eighty million dollars set aside by the government. Is the government prepared for the additional expenditure? I'm not asking you to impose a cap on the allowance here. I'm just asking if there is a high number of participants, will you set a cap on, for example, the expenditure? Secretary? It is out of the control of the government in terms of which age groups we get the most. We try to encourage those aged forty or above to join the employment market, but we believe that there are more people aged between forty to sixty to join the scheme because they can still take up employment. We have been working with two major trade unions to launch the scheme and I thank them for that. Also, how much money should we reserve? This is an art. Some people, they may have taken up employment for a certain period of time, but after, say, a few months, they quit the jobs. Please rest assured that for those who have joined the scheme and they fulfill the requirements, they will definitely get the allowance. So there will be no caps, right? Good, that's a good news. So um for those who are eligible, they will get the allowance. Next, Mister Kenneth Lau. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on zero-four-six, a question from Doctor Lo Wei Kwok. In twenty twenty-one, the government launched the G B A Youth Employment Scheme. According to the government, there are a thousand and ninety-one people who joined the scheme and only six hundred and thirty-two who completed the training, which is about sixty percent. Does the government know why some of the young people could not complete the on-the-job training? Also, will the government allocate resources to follow up on the training situation of the young people in the G B A? Also, in twenty twenty-three, the government provided two thousand five hundred and forty vacancies for young people and in year twenty twenty-four, two thousand one hundred and eighty-six. And those who were employed about um twenty-eight and nineteen percent respectively for the two years. Has the government assessed the reasons for the low participation rate? Is it because the positions offered by the participating enterprises do not meet the needs of young people? Will the government make adjustment as it screens the participating enterprises? Also, will you step up publicity? For example, in post-secondary institutions, there could be briefing sessions to attract more graduates from universities to work in the G B A. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions about the G B A Youth Employment Scheme. Secretary, please.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you, Mister Lau, for your question on the G B A. Youth employment scheme. We think this scheme has served its purpose. Even we, if we have a lot of job vacancies, they may not be all filled up. Sometimes, there are simply. More jobs than candidates. Now, all the participating businesses are quality businesses with. Establishments in both Hong Kong and the Bay Area. We have. The leaders with a business size of a trillion R M B. They are the leading players in the country's tech industry. It is very difficult to get in without the plan. Now, one of them is Tencent. It is very difficult to get a job in this industry. But under the G B A scheme, young people can get a chance. Now, there are young people who, from Hong Kong, who. Remained in the company to work. So besides the number, the quality of the job openings are also important. This year, we have enhanced this game to allow sub-degree holders to. Be eligible as well. The jobs suitable for sub-degree holders are different, so we will be more flexible and. Reach out to more enterprises. Mister Kingsley Wong, thank you. My questions are about uh one four eight and zero one six. Now, question one four eight. About the general employment policy in A S M T P, every year, fifty-five thousand applications were approved with twenty-five, with twenty-six thousand. Incoming talents earning. Twenty thousand dollars per month on average, two thousand dollars below the median average. So it shows that the quality of the incoming talents is just so-so. Now, every year, there are a hundred and sixty thousand applications under the T T P S, but only. Twenty percent of them got approved. That's the quality migrant admission scheme. Eighty percent of the applications under Q M A S. Were rejected. So does it show that there is abuse of the Q M A S? And I'm also worried about the situation of bogus employment. Now, for example, the. Funeral industry apprentice, the requirement is so strange. The candidates need to know how to drive a hearse, how to dress up the body. And they need to. Be fluent in both Putong Hua and English. They need to be. Xavvy in computer, in computer skill as well. The salary, however, is just fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. They need to work seven days a week. But will we? Create a blacklist for unscrupulous employers who engage in bogus employment? Now, with so many talent admission schemes and the enhanced supplementary labor scheme, do we have the manpower to keep the gate? Now, this is obviously bogus employment advertisements. Still. It appears on the Labor Department website. So how can the government weed out the? Advertisements for bogus employment on the website? Thank you. How can we enforce the system and prevent bogus employment? Thank you, chairman, and thank you, Mister Kingsley Wong. Now, according to Mister Wong, he thinks. The quality of talents are low, is low because some talents earn less than twenty thousand dollars per month. While I disagree, there are two types of visa, one is. Above or beyond a hundred and eighty days, for some, it's just a few days. That is a visa for talents who come to Hong Kong for short-term. Employment, for example, organizing a concert, so the. Salary would be much lower than the median level. But of course, we will be the gatekeeper. Now, about the approval rates of Q M A S, whether there is abuse of the system. That's the design characteristic of the system. Previously, in the past, we had a annual quota, that's why many people were deterred from applying. Then we lifted the quota and, but we still have a point system, that's why many people gave it a try. Now, for T T P S, it is very transparent, you can. Tell whether you are eligible based on your educational attainment and your salary. For Q M A S, however, we do the calculation for you. So even for people who are just giving it a try, they need to pay a six hundred dollars first. I believe that this threshold would deter. Apparently unsuitable candidates. Now, on, also on bogus advertisement. Now, for the four-week and local employment under. The enhanced supplementary labor scheme, we do have a requirement on the minimum wage. For advertisement on the labor department, they may not be under the scheme, and also we need to. Look at the long term. New joiners of the funeral industry should learn how to handle various tasks in the business as well. So these may not be bogus advertisement. There are tens of thousands of advertisements on the Labor Department's website. If you are just picking one with lower salary and. Higher requirements, it is not fair to say it is bogus. Thank you for your detailed response. Next, Miss Lillian Quo. Thank you, chairman. I would like to follow up on my own question. Zero nine three. Now, the talent engage operation. I want to know their administrative cost. Now, the government has given me the details. However, they, the reply. The administrative course is only about the. Immigration department. So in terms of the administrative course of the talent gauge itself. How much is the cost? I asked for. The establishment and the administrative costs and man-hour spans by the office, but the reply is just about the immigration department. Secretary. Chairman, I thank Miss Lillian Quo for the question. Now, according to the immigration ordinance, only the director of immigration can grant. An approval to an incoming talent. The talent engage is only for facilitating the incoming of the talents. They will reach out to the talents, but the approval is not. Under the Labor and Welfare Bureau's purview. Miss Lillian Quo, I just want to know how much has been spent on the talent engage since this establishment. Maybe I framed my question poorly. I want to know how much has been spent on the office. We do have the figure, we will provide the figure to Miss Lillian Quo after the meeting. Thank you. Next, Mister Johnny Ng. I would like to follow up on Mister Rodney Chan's question on. The G B A youth employment scheme, and that's question number two. Now, the scheme has been running for several years. I declare interest, my. The organization I work in is also a subsidized organization. So do we have a breakdown of the industries? Which recruited these young people? I will also wants to know the ratio of. Mainland graduates and local graduates who are employed under this scheme. According to my experience, it is more common for young people. With a mainland. Educational background who are employed under this scheme. Now, under the Y H, uh H Y A B, there is um a G B A entrepreneurship program. I wonder if there is any interaction between the two programs? To help graduates from this program to start, to start a business under the other program. Thank you. Many questions about the G B A scheme. Breakdown of local and mainland students and also the ratio, the types of industries hiring the young people. Thank you. There are many candidates under this scheme who are graduates from the mainland, that is natural. At the same time, we have a lot of young people under this scheme who are local graduates or overseas graduates. We do encourage our students to pursue. Academic qualification in the mainland. And we also encourage mainland students to come to Hong Kong to study, so. I don't think a breakdown is really necessary. We have a lot of collaboration with the H Y A B. The two schemes. Have different purposes. That is called the youth business H K. Now, for our candidates, if they would like to study business, we will give all, give them all a help. I would defer to um Department Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Ng. Now, about the types of industries. Most of the industries are business and service sectors, so these are the major corporations and technology companies. And also, we have a lot of companies in the financial services industry. This is the second largest type. There are also educational services, import and export, manufacturing even. Concerning the. Composition of the candidates, whether they are mostly from mainland universities, that's not the case. True, there are many from the mainland, but there are also many candidates who are local graduates. Now, we will continue to reach out to local universities as well as universities in the mainland. We will go deep into the campuses to encourage students to participate in these schemes. We will collaborate with. University departments which. Help um youth employment. Next, Mister Michael Look. Thank you. My own question, zero four nine. Now, in the labor sector, there is always a worry that um there would be abuse of the supplementary labor scheme. Now, I think the government should conduct a research on a. On an exit mechanism or a break, breaking mechanism for the supplementary scheme. Now, for example, retail accommodation and catering, the average wage is a sixteen thousand dollars. And that has remained for, that has been the case for many years. Now, with the supplementary labor scheme, the employers have more options, so they don't have to raise the wage level to retain the talent, so we need to. Put a brake on this. Now, more than twenty thousand. Workers have been imported for the catering industry. Now, the unemployment rate is higher in the sector now. Now, there are many people telling us that they have been fired or. Converted into part-time workers recently. We need to put a brake on the importation scheme for the catering industry as well. So part B of my question. According to the reply. The government gave us the establishment of the government responsible for this game. We are worried whether there is sufficient manpower to ensure that all these safeguards are upheld. Now, with insufficient manpower. Applications may be granted without proper vetting. Now, about bogus employment, as mentioned by Mister Kingsley Wong, let's say if Labor Department referred a candidate to. The employer and the employer refuses to hire the referred candidate, the Labor Department. Should conduct a survey on why the candidate has been rejected. So is there a mechanism for the supplementary scheme as well? Does the employer only have to say that they are not happy with the candidate and then they can hire someone from? Abort? Now, after. A scheme has been implemented, how can we ensure the. Ratio of local workers against imported labor is two to one? Now, in, according to media reports, um there are employers who feel that um. There are, there are employees who have been converted to. Part-time employment after the importation scheme has been implemented. So has the government conducted surprise check, surprise inspection on? The employment? Now, on entry. The imported labor may be, may just. Take a junior post, like junior chef, but are they promoted to senior chef or are they more senior post? I think there are many questions. If necessary, the government can um provide supplementary information after the meeting.
I'm going to tell Mister Look that. We abide by the rules under the mechanism. The major principle that we abide by is the priority for local workers. And we ask employers to hold a four-week recruitment exercise. So we telephoned to each worker who went to the interview. So please rest assured that we called up every worker. We want to remind workers. To pick up the phone. Sometimes, we couldn't re-contact the workers. We want both the trade unions as well as ourselves to make good use of the mechanism. How can you ensure the two-to-one ratio? Will the director give a brief response? We'll do some sampling checks. To be honest, it's quite impossible. For us to check each company. If we get complaints, we will take immediate follow-up actions. How? Much sampling check will you do? Please provide the supplementary information after the meeting. Chairman, we adopt the risk-based principle. Say we have a bad employer. And he does not abide by the two-to-one ratio, will get complaints from the trade unions also. Say he managed to circumvent the sampling check. He will still have to apply for visa renewals. We have many administrative means that we can use. For example, we can reject the visa applications. We hope that there will be more development opportunities under the E S L S. It's crucial that there is a monitoring mechanism. Next, Mister Stanley Ng. I would also like to follow up on the question about imported workers. And I would like to ask about zero two four. The secretary mentioned that. The administration will prioritize local employment. And that it will review the twenty-six job types under the scheme. You've spent a lot of resources and manpower on this. How are you going to review it? What direction are you going to take? Are you going to continue to prioritize local employment or are you going to relax the scheme? There are many concerns. Surrounding this scheme. We've seen an increase in the local unemployment rate. Mister Look mentioned about the two-to-one ratio. If you want to prioritize local employment. Then you have to ensure that there is a two-to-one ratio in each sector or industry. Instead of in each or within each organization. If you abide by the two-to-one ratio for each job type, then you will be able to prioritize local employment. My other question is this. The administration once said that occupational safety covers mental health. However, according to your reply.
The occupational health clinics. Does not provide any. Consultations. For people with mental health needs. This is quite contradicting. If mental health is part of. Occupational health. Then how come such services aren't included or covered by the occupational health clinics to better protect workers? Say you can refer patients to the other departments. Under the local healthcare system. If you aren't covering mental health, then. It shows that you do not care about people's occupational health. Secretary. First, on the enhanced supplementary labor scheme. Our direction is clear. The major guiding principle is that we have to prioritize local employment. At the same time, we have to look at the development needs of local enterprises. We haven't been deviating from this principle. Now on the two-to-one ratio. We look at the ratio in each organization instead of in each job type. This has been working effectively. Say for S M Es. If you. Abide by the two-to-one ratio for each job type, we hard for, for example, a restaurant to hire a cook. For big enterprises, it's hard for them to reach the ratio of two-to-one. It's usually elderly care homes or subvented care homes. That meet the ratio of two-to-one, but again, it's also very hard for them to recruit workers. Now on occupational health clinics, a lot of doctors are from the Department of Health. If we ask a psychiatrist to station at the clinic, then there won't be enough psychiatrists at the public hospitals. So if there is a worker who needs to see a psychiatrist, we will refer him to the hospital authority. Mister Lam Chan Sing. I'd like to follow up on zero one seven. On the reemployment allowance scheme, the scheme has been quite effective. We are forty to fifty thousand short in terms of non-skilled workers. For those participating in the scheme, which account for about twenty to thirty thousand people. They are in the service industry mostly. Just now, the secretary said that for those who have the approval, they'll definitely get the allowance. But in the face of the fiscal deficit, will you withdraw from. Paying the allowance? Some say that with a difficult business environment. And with high rent, it's been hard for them to hire workers. And with this scheme, it's been easier for them to hire workers. Will the secretary. Undertake to continue to accept applications at least within this year so that those who are interested in joining the scheme, they can do so. The other question is about. Oh four oh. The pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured. We have about a thousand people joining the scheme, which falls below the target of five thousand. However, it seems that the rehabilitation treatment has been working. The pilot scheme is supposed to last for three years and it's about to expire. What will be the next step for the government? Will the government expand the program to other sectors or other types of injuries? Or will the government regularize the program? Reemployment allowance scheme and the pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. Secretary. The scheme has been quite successful and that's why we have reserved extra provision for the scheme. Of course, will the provision be enough for an unlimited number of applications? Well, please rest assured that. We will carry on with the scheme. This is non-cash limited. That means. If there isn't enough money, we will. Allocate more resources to the schemes. Of course, if there is a tenfold increase in terms of the number of applications, we won't. Inject money into the scheme indefinitely. We will definitely notify people ahead of time if. The reserve is exhausted. So we will keep in view with the money we have under the scheme. As for the rehabilitation program for employees injured. We have to look at the cost-effectiveness of the program first before we make a decision on how we should go forward. I'd like to declare that uh the organization I belong to, it has participated in the reemployment allowance scheme. Mister Benson Look. I'd like to follow up on question oh one nine about the prevention of heat stroke employees at work. Employer-employee relationship is crucial. Employees, if they have to. Work in a very hot environment, the employer should provide preventive measures to prevent heat stroke. I have the following concerns. First, I noticed that in the government's reply. In terms of the number of inspections in high-risk places, I see that in year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four compared to year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. There is a drop of two thousand to four thousand inspections. While we see a drop in the number of inspections. We see that heat-stress-related work injury cases as well as complaint cases have increased. By two to threefold. And the number of warning letters issued have increased twenty-fold, a tenfold. Want to know. Why there were complaints? For example, was it because records were not kept? Can the administration give us examples of the complaint? Now on improvement notices, I noticed that there weren't any improvement notices issued over the past three years. Does it mean that employers have been implementing preventive measures such as providing potable water? I'll defer to um Deputy Commissioner. Mister Vincent Fong to address the questions. If you still remember in year twenty twenty-three. We wrote out a new set of guidelines as well as a new warning system. We did a lot of publicity work back then. So. We managed to enhance people's awareness about this. That's why we got more reports. And during inspections. We reminded employers of the heat-stress problem. So in terms of the figures, you see that in year twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, we implemented a series of measures as well as publicity campaigns. We also stepped up inspection effort. For problematic employers, we issued warnings to them. That's why, as Mister Benson Look said, for those who did not provide potable water. They were quick to react and they. Made remedies. That's why the number of improvement issues, uh notices issued remained at zero. In the past. We had um different inspectors. And after year twenty twenty-three, we adopted a more centralized approach and we adopted a risk-based approach and focused on. Sites and locations with more problems. Let's see if the deputy commissioner, uh I mean the assistant commissioner has anything to add.
Please switch on the assistant commissioners, the deputy commissioners microphone. As mentioned. By my colleague. We promoted the guide, the guidance notes on work. In hot weather in twenty twenty-three. So before that, the inspection number was lower. Miss Carmen Khan, thank you. My own question, reply. Zero two five and also reply one three three from Mister Shanghai Long. In zero two five, I raised question on resources dedicated to protecting oversight of workers. I know the secretary is also. Taking this issue close to his heart. Now I received a very detailed reply with three annexes. Now in twenty twenty-three, for every hundred thousand workers, four point one. Died in work. A thousand, one thousand three hundred seventy. Experienced non-fatal accidents. Now in twenty twenty-third quarter. There were three deaths and a thousand two hundred and thirty non-fatal injuries for a hundred thousand workers. Even after the amendments of the law, only a few cases were fined. Now, one of the cases, the defendant was fined for four thousand dollars. The defendants who was fined the most was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now between twenty twenty and the third quarter of twenty twenty-four, there were ninety-five deaths at work, but only. Some sixty cases were concluded. So I'm concerned whether the. Labor Department. Has dedicated sufficient resources to help the injured workers or the aggrieved families. Get the compensation and punish the wrongdoers. Now, the government said that there is not a record of contractors who are involved in fatal accidents. I think we need to have this record. This will help you follow up on the cases and also whether future. Contracts should be awarded to these contractors. It will serve as a deterrent. Now, in Mister Shanghai Long's question, I declare interest. I am a member of the board of the Hong Kong Top Talent Service Association. Now, there are only a small number of renewal applications received, so the government cannot analyze, they cannot get a meaningful. Analysis out of the number yet. So what number you are talking about? When can you tell us about the effectiveness of the scheme? Thank you. Two questions. O S H. Work accidents and top talent pass scheme. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Miss Khan. On O S H, I would defer to Mister Fong. On renewal of visas under T D P S, we can share more data with members by the middle of this year. There will be some sixty thousand renewal applications received then. There will be. Sufficient data for a meaningful analysis. Deputy Commissioner for Labor on work accident. Thank you. Now for every thousand workers. In twenty twenty-one, for every thousand workers in the construction industry, the accident rate is twenty-nine point five. Last year, twenty twenty-four, it was twenty-four point eight. With. Our work and the stakeholders' support, this figure has. Seen some improvement. In twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-three fatal cases involving the construction industry. Last year, there were just fourteen. But of course, one death is too many. We will continue to conduct inspection, enforce the law. Conduct publicity and education campaigns. Now, as mentioned by the Secretary of Labor in his opening remark. The Labor Department will make use of technology to enforce the law. Sometimes. It takes time for the court to arrange appear for hearing dates and also to gather evidence, so that's why some cases are not being dealt with quickly. My question was whether additional resources would be allocated to support the workers after the legislative amendments of the. O S H ordinance to help workers get the compensation. And also, I think if you have a record of contractors involved in fatal accidents, it would help you. Improve the situation. On record-keeping. I think you can find the names of the contractors from the court record and also the ongoing cases, but it would be best if the. Labor Department has their own set of figure. Assistant Commissioner, please. Now concerning non-fatal accidents. Every year, there are quite a high, quite a large number of non-fatal. Accidents, and we don't have sufficient manpower to investigate each and every non-fatal accident and the number of contractors involved. As a result, we don't have the particular figure, but we have a figure for the fatal accidents. That's why we need technology to. Overcome this bottleneck. We can't give up simply because of the sheer number of cases. I see the secretary nodding. Yes, I think Form Two from the Labor Department can show whether. The contractor was involved in work accident as well. Mister Shanghai Long, thank you. My own reply, own question. Reply one one three. I declare interest. I am the founding president of the Hong Kong Top Talent Service Association. Now, importation of talents is important for Hong Kong's economic growth. Now, in the main reply, the government. Reiterate that um. Based on the number application in twenty twenty-three, the expected. Contribution to GDP is a one point two percent accumulate accounting for thirty-four billion dollars. Is that true? I just want to confirm that because it seems that the secretary has. Quoted the figure again as the Global Talent Summit in February. Now with that amount of contribution to our economy. Why is the government charging the applicants a renewal fee? The government is going to charge. A very high renewal fee, six times as much as before on the applicants. Since they are making so much economic contribution to Hong Kong, why is the government being so stingy? Has the government consulted these stakeholders before. Adjusting the renewal fee upward? Other government services have not had. A fee increase. So why does the government? Why is the government raising the renewal fee for? Top talents? Now with the thirty-four billion dollars of economic contribution to Hong Kong. I think it is not fair to deprive. Top talent couples who have stayed in Hong Kong for six years. Even if they. Give birth to a baby, they will not be eligible for the twenty thousand dollar newborn baby bonus. So I hope you can take it up to the. Financial Secretary. This is a kind of welfare we should offer to the talents as well. Newborn baby bonus is like a red pocket for. New parents, so can you fight for the talents and give them this welfare? Thank you. Mister Shanghai Long. It is obvious that the talents have brought about a lot of economic benefits to Hong Kong's economy, so. This is the real figure. It is the figure confirmed by our government economist. Now, to be frank, the immigration fee for other countries are much higher than ours. For example, the UK and. Canada and Singapore, they charge a much higher fee. On immigrants. Every talent scheme comes with administrative costs. Now, we used to charge an extremely low fee. Even with the price hike, we are still the cheapest in the world. Now, we used to charge an extremely low fee. Even with the price hike, we are still the cheapest in the world. Now, if the talents are bringing about so much economic benefits to Hong Kong, they wouldn't bother paying the a thousand one nine hundred fee. They can afford it. Now, for fee increase, usually the government does not consult the stakeholders, and it is very difficult to consult the potential talents. We are just pitching the fee as a cost recovery basis, but we are grateful for the talents who are contributing to our economy. Now, the newborn baby bonus of twenty thousand dollars, that's not under the L W B's purview, but we will convey Mr. Shanghai Long's view to the Deputy Secretary for administration. Thank you for your detailed answer. Next, Mr. Perry Yu.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is on my own question, reply eighty one and one five zero. Now, the declaration of interest. I'm an I'm a board member of a travel agency and a hotel. According to the reply, for the successful application under the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme, the percentage is sixty five percent or fifty two percent in terms of individual applications. That's the success rate. But how many workers have actually come to Hong Kong under this scheme? The government always tells us they don't have the record. So do I have to ask the Immigration Department about the number of work visas granted? Now, for the hotel accommodation industry, the hotels are not warming up to the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme because the cost is high and there are lots of bottlenecks. So some one thousand five hundred cases were approved for us, for the hotel accommodation sector. How many people, how many workers have come in the end? I want to know the figure. Now, another question I have for the secretary is about V pass. That is the Vocational Professional Admission Scheme. Now, the tourism sector has been asking for a similar scheme long before the scheme is a thing. Still, the tourism sector is not covered by this group of the V pass. I have a lot of doubts about the three eligibility criteria. One of the criteria is that it must be a sus- a, an industry with sustainable development. Well, is guest house accommodation or hotel accommodation not a sustainable industry? The other criteria is continuous professional training or technical training. Well, we have been doing that. Third criteria, difficulty in local enrollment of students. Now, there are two hundred and sixty quota places and two hundred seventy two for local students. So I'm glad to see local students interested in the courses, but you don't have a figure or record for the final number of candidates actually entering the trade. Now, in name, it is called vocational training, but in fact, in fact, the students are only using it as a rung on their career ladder. So V pass is a scheme for attracting non local students to fill the manpower gap in industry. So for V pass, can you set aside some quota places for non local students to enroll? Thank you, Secretary.
Let's see if the Labor Department has anything to add afterwards. There's a time lag after we changed the quota. That's why we do not maintain the relevant figures. Within the Labor Department, we only have the approval figures. Some employees do not make use of the quotas approved, some they use the quotas immediately. So there is a time lag. Now, on V pass. It is true that we haven't extended the scheme to high diploma programs for tourism related training courses. We have to see whether local people are interested in enrolling in the programs. We have to make sure that we have enough local students. If we open the programs for non local students, we might see a drop in local students. Some of the courses offered, local students aren't interested in them. Chairman, I have a question for Secretary. Are you saying that we don't have enough quotas or training places? Secretary, please be brief. I understand where Mr. Perry Yu is coming from. We will continue to think about this. It's not that we are adopting a rigid approach. We just need time to mull over this. Mr. Frankie Yeak. I'd like to follow up on oh one six, a question from Mr. Chow Shiu Chong. I'm looking at the annex. Application number and approval number under the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme. A lot of times, the number of approved imported workers just account for half of those applied for the program. Also, for ferries, a lot of them, they have to work long hours for those who operate ferries. But according to your requirements, workers cannot work over twelve hours. And this do, does not help address the problem of manpower shortage. Will the government consider relaxing the restrictions and requirements to help deal with the manpower shortage in the ferry industry? Also, according to your reply, how many people in the Labor Department are dealing with these applications? Seven senior labor inspectors and twenty five labor inspectors. Within six months' time, you inspected four thousand six hundred and eleven workplaces and three thousand six hundred some accommodations. I think inspections are necessary to prevent unscrupulous practices of employers, but do inspections have to be conducted so frequently? If the Enhanced Labor Importation Scheme is expanded in the future, then there might need to be more inspections. Now, I'd like to follow up on one oh one, a question from historian Kong. And importation scheme for skilled labor. You need to look at the qualifications as well as backgrounds of um applicants. You have to also look at the license requirements. We have the qualifications framework in Hong Kong in many places in Asia. For example, for car repairs as well as vessel repairs, there might not be a accredited program or credentials for these workers. But according to you, before applying, the applicants will have to be employed by the local employers first. If I'm an employer, I wouldn't hire someone who would not be able to take up the job. Say I have decided on hiring somebody and even without the relevant certificates, would I be allowed to hire that worker? Secretary, please be brief. I believe Mr. Yeak is most concerned about the last question. We will be stringent, but at the same time, we will be practical. Some workers, they require to obtain certain qualifications. And for some jobs, you may not necessarily be able to take up internship for a year or above in order to be qualified. So we will think about relaxing the requirements. On the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme, we've heard your views. Views from employers and employees, they are very different from each other. So we will prioritize local employment first. Mr. Chow Shiu Chong. I'd like to follow up on a question from myself, number oh one six, about the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme. I asked the administration about job types with a lot of imported workers. I asked whether the administration, the impacts on local workers. And according to the government, it will continue to monitor the relevant statistics. Over the past two years, after the launch of the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme, we've got eighty thousand imported workers. For some industries, with the large number of imported workers, we've seen a huge impact on local workers. Take the F and B industry as an example. Over the past year or so, for cooks, we have over ten thousand imported workers. For waiters and waitresses, we have nearly ten thousand imported workers as well. These two job types, we have quite a huge number of imported workers. I got questioned by a trade union. If for the catering industry, we've got a large number of imported workers and local workers, they can only take up part time jobs or they get sacked. Some representatives of the industry said clearly that once they've hired enough imported workers, they will dismiss all the local workers. This is dealing a huge blow to local workers. We have twenty six job types that are not allowed under the Enhanced Scheme. This is because these job types can, or these jobs can be filled by local workers. But the administration said we need to relax the scheme. And now we're seeing an influx of imported workers. I think and I want to know if it is time for us to tighten the scheme again. Now, within the Labor Department, according to the administration, there are forty one labor officers plus about ten clerical staff. You're also engaging non civil service contract staff. In the face of tight public finances, will you reduce manpower? Which might result in a heavier workload for your offices. Secretary? I thank Mr. Chow for the views. We will take into consideration these views as we conduct reviews. We have to look at the facts. We have fifty four thousand approved imported workers, but in fact, we have a number of imported workers smaller than that. Also, it's been hard for employers to recruit cooks. We have cooks good at cooking Guangdong cuisine, but we don't have that many cooks who know how to cook foreign cuisine. So in the upcoming review, we will see how we can improve the scheme. Also, concerning manpower, if we do not have enough staff, we will take up the workload with the existing resources. Mr. Michael Lee. Please switch on the mic for Mr. Lee. I'd like to follow up on question zero zero three, a question from Ms. Judy Chan. In year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, we have seen an increase of employment agencies from sixteen hundred or so to eighteen hundred, up ten percent. Still, and we have about two hundred complaints. We have many people who need foreign domestic helpers and there have been a mismatch of foreign domestic helpers and there have been commission problems. And domestic helpers have been switching jobs. But you've only prosecuted a few employment agencies, which is less than two percent. You've got so many complaints and you've also launched investigations. How come the prosecution number is still on the low side? Is it because of lack of manpower or a lack of evidence? Now, on zero one nine, it's a question from Mr. Chow Shiu Chong about the prevention of heat stroke. The administration can disseminate information to employers and employees about preventing heat stroke. We don't want employers to work when it is very hot. According to figures, in year twenty twenty, there were twelve twenty, twelve cases. In year twenty twenty four, there were twenty nine cases. Will the administration consider making use of A I technologies such as smartwatches so that it will give vibration alerts to employees during work so that when it gets very hot, they will go under shelters? Will you also make use of technologies to show to employees the vital signs of employees so that employers can react in time when anything happens? Mr. Raymond Ho can take the question about F H Ds and my other colleague can address the question about F H, uh, about heat stroke. Now, on employment agencies. We follow up on every single complaint we get. We have to look at the severity of the cases. Depending on the seriousness, we may, for example, issue warning letters. If we have enough evidence, we'll definitely take out prosecutions. Now, on heat stroke. In response to Mr. Lee's questions, in year twenty twenty three, we launched a series of new measures. And employees became more aware of the risks of heat stroke. And we've also stepped up publicity as well as inspections. That's why we saw an increase in numbers. Our message is that heat stroke is preventable. We want employers to first make risk assessments. And after discussion with employees, they can come up with ways to cope with heat threats. Indeed, employers have been making use of technologies and we encourage people to continue to use technologies. During the summer, as we continue to promote our programs, we want to roll out new methods for employers to prevent heat threats or heat stroke.
Mr. Kenneth Lang. Thank you. My question is about the G B A Youth Employment Scheme. Reply number forty four and Continuing Education Fund, reply one five three. Now, on the G B A scheme. I would like to ask about the situation of non local graduates coming to Hong Kong to work. Now, that was an enhancement measure announced last year. In the reply, I was not given the latest progress of this game. So is there any update? Has any applications been made under the new pathway? Now, the enterprises will have to hire non local youth at a minimum wage of eighteen thousand dollars per month. Now, with a high living cost, is that Now, with a high living cost, is that salary package attractive enough? Now, reply one five three, Continuing Education Fund. Now, less than one percent of the eligible candidates have spent all of the subsidies. Eighty-seven percent of the public still have more than fifteen thousand dollars in their account. Why is such a large number of citizens not spending the amounts in their accounts? Secretary, now for the GBA scheme, I would defer to the Deputy Commissioner and I would defer to the Permanent Secretary to talk about the CEF. Commissioner for Labor. Thank you, Mr. Leng, about mainland youth coming to Hong Kong to work. This scheme was launched beginning this year. So we have not received any applications from interested enterprises yet. But some enterprises have made inquiries with us. Now, about the eighteen thousand dollars salary, that is just the minimum level. Now, since we are only beginning the self-bound scheme, we think this salary level is suitable. Now, I believe that some enterprises would be willing to offer a more attractive package. On CEF. Thank you. I understand the concern on the rather underwhelming usage rate of the accounts of the fund. Now, there are only a minority of the account holders who have spent all the amount. However, the, most of the people who have spent all the who are making use of the CEF are those people in the middle-aged and in the youth, between thirties and forties. Now, there are some four thousand courses available across the territory. We try to make the geographical distribution and the diversity of courses as rich as possible. And also, online courses are also eligible for coverage under the CEF. So that is how we are encouraging more people to utilize the fund. Now, besides the CEF, the government offers other subsidies to encourage continuous learning, for example, the ERB. For the unemployed, they are also eligible for an additional allowance under the ERB. So in the upcoming reform for the ERB, resources will be consolidated to better utilize the available resources. Ms. Ms. Young, thank you. Question eighty-eight and one five one, my question. Now, QMAS, Quality Migrants Admission Scheme. We have had a discussion on that two days ago as the Subcommittee. Now, the approval rate is low. There are forty-eight thousand applications, but only nine thousand one hundred cases were approved. So maybe we need to raise the threshold a bit higher. And in the Secretary's opening, he said under the QMAS, the government will reach out proactively to attract top-tier talents to come to Hong Kong. Now, there's a hundred eighty-four colleagues under the top talents engage and under the QMAS scheme. So will the one hundred eighty civil servants be also responsible for reaching out to potential candidates under QMAS? Would that help increase the success rates? And will that shorten the waiting time and processing time? To strike out proactively, that means there will be more applicants. So will the waiting time be lengthened? Can we have a more transparent set of data? Now, one five one, Talent Engage. Is the work of the Talent Engage overlapping with the QMAS team? Because they are also striking out proactively to find talents. The same applies for the Oasis. These are all civil servants striking out and reaching out proactively to the potential talents to attract them. So these three establishments, is there any overlapping and how is the division of labor? Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Young. Now, for QMAS, allow me to supplement. There are two parts. One is under the General Point System. You can say that it's like the economy class of QMAS. The other one is the business class or the first class. Now, recently, there are, there are two world-class snooker athletes. And one is O'Sullivan and the other one is Trump. So they came to Hong Kong via the first-class parts under QMAS. So we do have a point system. But there are the other class of talents which do not need to apply under the scheme. We will strike out to attract this group of talents to come to Hong Kong. So we will roll out the red carpet for this group of talents. We are not adding, we are not expanding the existing establishments, but we will make use of our existing team to provide VIP services for these special talents. In any event, we will not enlarge the establishment. So that's like, we want to provide tailor-made service for these talents, just like a private bank. So for the other parts of QMAS, the General Point System, since we have lifted the quota, we have seen much more applications. But I think with time, the applicants now understand better which cases will be approved. Now, in any event, you have to pay six hundred dollars for applying. So that essentially eliminated abuse. Thank you. So I think the Secretary has repeated his point. Ms. Maggie Chan, thank you, Chairman. My question is about a reply eighty-four about the Quality Migrants Admission Scheme, QMAS, and about attracting top-tier legal talents and law firms to establish in Hong Kong. Now, in twenty twenty, we have been providing office spaces for international dispute resolution service providers. Now, how much has been spent since we have been doing that? And what is the budget for this year? And also, so far, as an international hub, how many offices are we providing to international law firms? And also, how much rent do we charge on these law firms? Are they above or below the market rate? And has the government set KPIs or requirements for these law firms? Thank you. How are we supporting international law firms to set up in Hong Kong? Thank you. Now about the Hong Kong Legal Hub project, this is under the DOJ's purview. The reply given was from the DOJ. So we will consult the DOJ and give Ms. Maggie Chan a written reply. Well, I'm not very happy with the written reply. In my question, I didn't mention the Hong Kong Legal Hub at all. But that was brought up in the main reply. And some organizations were mentioned in the reply. Now, figures about the QMAS and legal talents were given. So I'm not very happy with this answer because it seems to be a bit of everything. So I would like to have a written supplement from the Secretary after the meeting. I think by bringing up the Hong Kong Legal Hub, the government is not focusing on my question. Now, the other question for the Secretary on QMAS in terms of legal talents under QMAS. The legal sector is one of the eight international centers for Hong Kong. So can I have a figure about legal talents coming under the QMAS? Well, I think as long as the candidates meet the eligibility at the QMAS, they can come in. So I believe that there is a large number of legal talents coming to Hong Kong under QMAS. I don't have the figure at hand, but we will provide Ms. Maggie Chan with a breakdown. And also, Ms. Maggie Chan's view, please convey it to the DOJ. Yes, I will. So the last member who speak in this session, Dr. So Chen Wing.
Thank you, Chair. Now, my own question, reply zero six nine. I have two questions. Now, the GBA Youth Employment Scheme. Now, for participating enterprises, since twenty twenty-one, there were four hundred and seventeen. In twenty twenty-four, the number dropped to two hundred and forty-nine. At the same time, the number of youth employed dropped from a thousand ninety-one to four hundred and seventeen in twenty twenty-four. The drop was sixty-two percent. Does the administration have an idea why there is such a huge drop in the number of participating enterprises and youth employed? Has the government conducted a research on the reason? Now, in January twenty twenty-four, the amount of allowances was increased. Or rather, January twenty twenty-five. So how much more enterprises do you think will join this scheme? Now, according to the table you provided, expenditure on promotional operation has been increasing since the conception of the scheme. Now, expenditure on allowance has increased drastically as well. However, the results are underwhelming because there is a huge drop in number of participating enterprises and number of youth employed. So this expand, this increase in expenditure on promotional operation, maybe you are doing it wrong. Can you enhance how you promote and operate? Now, before the Secretary answers, I will extend the meeting a bit until Dr. So Chen Wing's questions are answered. Secretary.
Thank you. Well, I don't think there is, we should look at it as there is a huge drop in number of participating enterprises and youth employed. The participation depends on the then situation. Now, back then, when the scheme was rolled out, it was during the pandemic and the unemployment rate was high. So it was natural that the reception, the response was more passionate. Now, with improvements in the economy, the number has dropped. Now, we are doing, we are making a big effort. We have extended the eligibility scope to sub-degree holders and non-local students. Starting from this year, mainland youth can also come to Hong Kong to work, so let's see. Thank you. There have been a lot of questions about the GBA Youth Employment Scheme and the Secretary has given a very detailed answer. So let's look forward to the success of the scheme. So that concludes this session. The next session will begin at three fifty-five PM. Thank you so much.